Thank you for being here. And I call you the Lord. There's some kind of the invitation. I would like to introduce two people that this tonight from Carl Albert High School. Cadet Butler, who is a senior with the ROTC program at Carl Albert. And she plans to join the United States Air Force once she graduates. And then we got Cadet Butler, or Cadet, Cadet Nolan, who is a junior at Carl Albert High School. And he started this. He is going into the United States Navy. And I asked him why the Navy, why not the Coast Guard? And he said the Coast Guard doesn't exist. So we've got an issue right off the bat. But, no, thank you guys for being here. And they will be leading us in our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Could you bow with me, please? Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We've enjoyed today, Lord. The moisture we received last night, Father, we thank you for these blessings. Thank you for these men and women and their willingness to serve on this council in this great city that we enjoy. Father, we ask that you give them wisdom and discernment and peace in their decisions tonight. We thank you so much for this great state and this great nation and those men and women who are willing to sacrifice to defend our freedoms. And we ask your protection upon them as well. Thank you for Jesus. We thank you for the sacrifice. Father, we don't know how to express that very, very well in our human condition, but just want you to know that we thank you and appreciate you for him and that sacrifice. And we ask these favors in his holy name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And just as a point of, a point of interest, for the last six years, the ROTC programs at Carl Albert High School and Midwest City High School have been coming to council and leading us in the pledge. We greatly appreciate their leadership in our community. That being said, community related announcements. Mr. Lyon, you're on deck.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start out by quickly discussing our, our face covering ordinance in Midwest City. And we have, we are on a, we have an ordinance that if two weeks go by that our positivity rate is less than five, five percent, that our ordinance will automatically dissolve. So, is that the right word, dissolve? Expire, that's a better word. Thank you, Madam Assistant City Attorney. So it appears we are, we are on that downward slide of positive COVID test, COVID positives. So on March 30th, if this positivity rate continues less than five percent, our ordinance will expire. Edmonds, I think, took their ordinance off last night. And Oklahoma City, at my understanding, is getting ready to do that same day. So, March 30th, if everything continues on the path that it is with less than five percent positivity, our ordinance will expire. And we will be putting out, we'll have Josh put out notice to the, to the community that the ordinance expires. And if anything changes, we'll let council and the public know. However, I would like to point out that it is important, we're still, there's still a lot of people, there's still COVID in our, in our community. We, we see it weekly as we review the numbers with the senior staff. And we would encourage you to wear your face coverings when you're within five, six feet of other individuals. It just makes sense, even if you've been vaccinated, it just makes sense until we're further down the road with more CDC guidelines. Anybody on the council have any comments or? Let's see. Midwest City residents who want to become more engaged in their community are missing a value opportunity if they're not attending monthly neighborhood associations meeting. These meetings are coordinated with Neighborhood Services and the Midwest City Police Department. And they're a forum for discussing challenges and finding workable solutions in our community. Residents can find their neighborhood meeting on our community calendar at MidwestCityOK.org. One of the things, Susan, you might want to go ahead and with your announcement, because it kind of fits into this, we talk about issues within the neighborhoods. If there's an influx of a certain crime or anything to work on and with our community action and go ahead.
Sure. So I had spoken with Mr. Lyon about, there's been some instances of porch piracy in my ward, particularly in the original mile section. And that information has been reported to the PD in both instances. In both instances, it involved a FedEx delivery truck. And the packages were swiped within a minute of delivery. So just as an alert to members of the community, if you're expecting a package to be delivered, particularly if it's coming via FedEx based on these experiences, please be observant about that. And if you experienced a loss by porch piracy, somebody swiping the package off your porch, please call the Midwest City PD to report it. They are actively engaged in trying to address this issue currently. And there is a post that's to go out on the Midwest City Police Department Facebook page in that regard also. So if you would take notice of that, please. And as Mr. Lyon mentioned, that is one of the issues that comes up at neighborhood association meetings. So it's a good way to stay involved in the community. Action officers are involved with this project also.
Thank you. Next announcement is April kicks off our Cruising for Coffee event. Takes place on the third Saturday of each month, April through October. Classic cars, custom cars, custom motorcycles will be on display in the parking lot at Santa Fe. Cattle Company from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Admission is free. There's no entry fee for the vehicles. And all ages are welcome to the event. Santa Fe is located at 7101 Southeast 29th in Town Center Plaza. So please join that. It's a great event. Next one is we are preparing for the Covered in Color Sidewalk Chalk Competition and Art Celebration will be held 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM Saturday, May 8th in the Charles Johnson Central Park, once again at Town Center on its 29th Street. Registrations are now being accepted for sidewalk chalk competition. And you can find that event at visitMidwestCity.com. VisitMidwestCity.com. Covered in Color will feature live entertainment, art vendors, local organizations showcasing their work. And there is plenty of free parking. And admission is free for that event as well. And then July 4th Tribute to Liberty, we will be celebrating in our regional park, Joby Barnes Regional Park. So we have a little bit of change in the music this year. So we'll be talking more about the events later as the event becomes closer. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. Ms. Eads, you have the question?
Yes. Unless I skipped this, did you mention the pool passes? Pool passes are on sale currently through the Parks and Rec Department. And they're still at a discounted rate, is my memory. But I don't remember what day that expires. So if anybody can help me with that one.
A week before we open.
Week before opening? Very good. And so the other thing I wanted to announce is there's a hygiene products drive for Middel students happening right now. Our Neighborhood Services and the Community Action Officers are assisting with being a drop off point for those hygiene products. Things like deodorant, body wash, shampoo, conditioner, toothpaste, toothbrushes, floss and mouthwash, feminine hygiene products, and any kind of prepackaged snacks that students can take with them on the go are appreciated. You can drop those off at the Charles Johnson Neighborhood Services Building, 8726 Southeast 15th Street. And any donations are appreciated.
And I also have mentioned that in reference to that drive, that it'd be expanded to all of the students here in Midwest City. I think it's geared on a high school, the two high schools in Midwest City. And I was asking that it be expanded to the other students here in Midwest City. So we know that they all has a disparity. And so that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else want to worship? One, one's gone. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we do have a proclamation to do. Does anyone hear from the tree board?
You can just read the proclamation here.
Then I will read that, read this proclamation. If you didn't know, Midwest City for thirty, the last thirty-five years has been a tree city. And an ice storm about took care of all that. But anyway, we've, we honor Arbor Day every year. And this is a proclamation for that. Whereas in 1872, Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees. And like I said, after the ice storm, we probably need to be doing some of that. Whereas this holiday is called Arbor Day and was first observed with planting more than many trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the United States and the world. Whereas trees are one of the most sustainable, cost-effective tools for fighting climate change, reducing topsoil erosion from wind and water, moderating temperature, which cuts heating and cooling costs, cleaning the air, and producing oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are renewable resource, given as paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of businesses, business areas, and beautify our community by providing a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the last thirty-eight years, Midwest City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation. Therefore, I'm Matt Dukesman, who's the mayor of Midwest City, who hereby plan March 21st through 26th as Arbor Week and request that all citizens celebrate our amazing trees and help us plant some more. Thank you. Okay, we'll now go into our consent agenda. Consent agenda, or these items are placed on consent agendas of the council by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by motion. If any item proposed does not meet with approval of all council or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, it will be heard and, or removed and heard and ready for order. And by the request of Ms. Eads, a request and motion will be made, removing, approving the consent agenda but removing item number five.
Motion to approve and, and to delete, not to delete, are we going to delete it?
No.
We're just going to pull it. Okay. Motion to approve and we are going to pull number five.
Number five.
Yes. See five.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Extinction, motion carries. Now we will hear, hear item number five from the consent agenda. Mr. Lyon?
Discussion and consideration awarding the bid to and entering into a contract with Shiloh Enterprises, Inc. in the amount of $5,198,000 to construct the WP Bill Atkinson Park, a 2018 general obligation project. At the request, Susan.
Ms. Eads, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to express my thanks to staff, particularly Billy and Kelly, who's reluctantly not moving forward at this point type of thing. She thought I was going to ask a question, see? To just thank you both and your unit and city staff overall, city leadership, and our citizenry for the approval of this project. I really think that this is going to be a project that is going to be of great benefit to our community as a whole. I think that the community area leading from Center Town Center towards the park will be a great place for future community events. And so I just wanted to express my thanks for all of your hard work with this and for the city's leadership and for the citizenry's belief in approving this as one of our bond projects.
And I'd like to say we appreciate Ms. Eads for helping us with some of the funding issues that we ran into on this project and helping direct some monies that were in her, within her ward that she helped direct towards this project so that we can build it on the scale that, that I say a grander scale, but on a scale that is going to be really cool for this community. It's going to be a special place.
And we're really hoping that, you know, we will be able to add in, in particular, the dog park with some future funding efforts. Because again, I think that and with the pets mart right in front of it, it would be a great location. And with our new animal services center, another area for people to take their brand new pets over and, and enjoy a community space. So I just wanted to thank you all. And with that, I would move to approve this item, Mayor.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Eads. Thank you, guys. Well, we now move into our discussion items. Discussion item number one has been removed by request of the applicant, so no action is needed for that. We move to item number two. Mr. Lyon?
It's PC 2069, Public Hearing with Discussion and Consideration of an Ordinance to Redistrict from R6 Single Family Detached Residential, PUD Plan Unit Development, and O2 General Office to a PUD governed by RMD Medium Density Residential and a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from LDR Low Density Residential to MDR Medium Density Residential for the property described as a part of Southwest Quarter Section 6 Township 11 North Range 1 West, addressed as 10100 Southeast 10th and 1120 South Post. No action was taken on this item at the February 23rd council meeting. Mr. Harless?
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. This is an eight point four acre request for planning development is located on the southeast corner of Southeast 10th and Post Road and encompasses two, two existing lots along Southeast 10th Street and Post Road. At the February 23rd, 2001 council meeting, there was discussion regarding parking setbacks and access to rear yards, among other items. The council took no action at the meeting to allow the applicant and staff to work through some of the concerns. The proposed PUD is governed by RMD Medium Density Residential District. All variants requested under the original application have been eliminated. And the applicant proposes to develop the area of requests according to all requirements of RMD zoning district. A limits of no access is shown along Southeast, I'm sorry, South Post Road to Southeast 10th Street, meaning that the individual lots will not have drives onto the street. The development is served by one access point from South Post Road and one access point from Southeast 10th. If the PUD is approved, the applicant will proceed with the preliminary flat application to begin subdivision process. All required infrastructure must be installed prior to the application of the final flat. Action is at discretion of the council. And I'd like to thank the applicant's team for meeting with us on a number of occasions to work through this setback issue. And they also provided a, a illustration to show how the 25-foot setback can accommodate parking. And I think for overall, it makes for a far better proposal. But at that point, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone from the audience have anything to say about this proposal?
Mr. Box and his, the guy that's sitting two over from him are part of this, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Would you ask him to come up too?
Will. Yes. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. As Billy stated, we've revised the pod. At this point, it's really a put and name only in that we are going to meet all zoning requirements. So frankly, it could be a straight zoning application, but instead you're getting certain commitments to amenities in the PUD. So we have no barriers whatsoever. We, we did provide an exhibit, it's in your packet, showing how a 20-foot length car as well as a 12-foot length car could fit in the driveway with the sidewalk at the front building on that setback. So our hope is that we've satisfied all the concerns as it relates to parking and setbacks and all of those other, other matters. And we're here to answer any questions.
I'd like to say something, and I know Sean probably wants to chime in too, and probably Rick. I talked to your client today on the phone, and I talked to his partner yesterday. And I appreciate that you guys have worked with Billy and the staff. And I want to reiterate something that Susan said a minute ago about our community development, how hard they work. They take a hit on a lot of this stuff. And they get blamed for a lot of things about the extra work that you had to go through to get here. The reason that they're doing that is he works for us. And we've been telling him that some of the things, and we've quoted as the sins of others, where they've allowed people to go in and not ahead of the time, where it would be a whole lot simpler to fix it and a whole lot cheaper to fix it for the citizens, wasn't being done for a long time. Just Susan brought up at the last council meeting about the parking and getting access down the original mile. You know, we're concerned about the fire trucks. I've talked to Billy, he thinks that's been worked out. We were taught, we were concerned about the parking on the streets. And I really think if we hadn't have brought that up, maybe, not maybe, but at some point in time, you would have sold, built a really good product, and we'd have had to go in and put no parking any time on the streets. And then you guys are gone, and we're the ones that are the bad guys, because we're having to fix the problem. We've seen this a lot with drainage. We've seen it a lot with, well, mostly drainage has caused us a huge issue over the years. So we, the community development people are just doing what we ask the city manager to do so. And I know you guys are probably hearing from a lot of people that we're anti-development. That is as far from the truth. And anybody that's telling you that is telling you a lot, because that's not what's going on. We just want to make sure that we protect the interests of the citizens years down the road. So I was, I'm satisfied with the two discussions I had. They were very frank and, there wasn't any issues. I've talked to Billy several times. I've talked to Rick, this is Ward, you know, I'm satisfied. But please don't take what we said last time as a reflection on community development, because they're only doing what we're asking them to do. What the city manager's asking them to do. Because we can't tell them, but we can certainly tell him that, hey, we're concerned about the parking, we're concerned about the drainage, we're concerned about the density, and we want to get it right. We need developments like this lock and leaves. I mean, there's a lot of people that want to leave Midwest City for several months at a time and don't want to deal with the outside of their buildings. But we've got to get it right in the beginning. And the people that are telling you that we're against you, against development, we're not, we just want to get it right the first time, so we're not having to go back years down the road and pay taxpayers money to get it fixed.
Yeah. So nobody's telling me that I, my practice is actually all over the metro. Right? So in terms of all the cities I practice in, I would say Midwest City is one of the more development friendly communities that I practice in. There are certain others that would absolutely fall in the anti-development category. Midwest City is never that. I'm always very quick to tell my clients that Midwest City is very pro-business, pro-development. Billy, like all the other community development directors that I deal with, certainly has a thankless job, because he's kind of put in the middle between the desires of developers and the desires of council through, through a city manager. So yeah, absolutely, we appreciate Billy and Kelly and all of their staff. So we're very happy that we were able to work through the issues and hopefully now have a product that, that the city can be proud of. You're absolutely right, all over the country, there is a housing crisis for things like this, frankly. Because you have an aging population that wants to travel, wants to leave town, and they don't want the maintenance of a traditional single-family home with a large backyard. They want to lock and leave, and they, they don't want to worry about it. So these are very desirable products, are all frankly age types, and we think it'll be very successful here in Midwest City.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? That being said, I'd entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Extinction, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we move into item number three. Mr. Lyon?
PC 2073, Public Hearing with Discussion and Consideration of an Ordinance to Redistrict from C1 Restricted Commercial to R6 Single Family Detached Residential for the property located as Block 7 Lot 4 of Country Estates, Third Edition, addressed as 419 Russell Drive. Mr. Harless?
Thanks, Mr. Lyon. This is a request to rezone the property from C1 Restricted Commercial to R6 Single Family Detached Residential. The .17 acre property is located at the corner of Key and Russell. A certificate of occupancy was issued in 2008 allowing real estate office at this location. Real estate business has since moved, and the new owner of the property would like to use a structure as a residence rather than an office. Aside from laundry business to the east, the property is surrounded by residential structures. The applicant has verified that the parcel is as is with the structure and parking area does not exceed the maximum allowable impervious service coverage of 65% in R6 zoning district. No variances are requested. Any further construction would be required to meet minimum requirements for the zoning ordinance for the R6 Single Family Zoning District. Action is at discretion of the council, and I'm going to be glad to answer any questions.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience have anything to say about this particular project? Does anyone on the council have any questions, Mr. Harless? That being said, I'd entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. Item number four.
PC 2074, Public Hearing with Discussion and Consideration of an Ordinance to Redistrict from C3 Community Commercial to SPUD Simplified Plan Unit Development governed by the C4 General Commercial District and a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from OR Office Retail to COMM Commercial for the property described as a part of the Southwest Quarter Section 34 Township 12 North Range 2 West and is addressed as 422 North Air Depot Boulevard. Mr. Harless?
Thanks, Mr. Lyon. This is a 1.46 acre request to rezone a property from C3 Community Commercial to SPUD Simplified Plan Unit Development governed by C4 General Commercial District. A lot of machine shop is currently being operated at this location. The owner, Midwest staff, has stated that he would like to operate a car sales lot on the property, which is not allowable use in C3 district. An application to rezone the parcel to C4 was denied by city council in January 2021. The applicant has submitted this spud application and added additional controls for the property. All C3 uses would be allowed in the property, as currently are, with the one C4 use of automotive sales and rentals, like. No additional or modifications to the existing structure are requested with this application. Action is at discretion of the city council. And I think everybody has a memo that I had placed on your, your area from Neighborhood Services Director Mike Stroh with some pictures. But I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Is the applicant in the audience?
Yeah.
Can you state your name and address for the record, sir?
Yeah, Abdul Kareem Salafi, 3128 Del Vio, Del City, Oklahoma.
So it is our understanding that you want to sell cars there?
Yes, sir.
And you currently have 10 untagged cars on your property?
Huh?
You have 10 untagged cars on your property currently?
Yeah, that's mine. I just parked them.
Do you currently have a license to sell cars in the state of Oklahoma?
I didn't sell any car yet. The shop's still closed.
Do you currently have a license to sell cars in the state of Oklahoma?
I don't.
At what point in time do you intend to get one?
After you guys approve.
I'm sorry?
After you guys approve.
So you're not selling any cars out of that spot right now?
No.
But you've got 10 cars on your lot untagged?
That's my own car.
They're for your personal use? You're going to drive 10 vehicles?
No, I have two personal use, and the rest, they are not operated yet.
They're what?
They are not operated.
They're not operated, like they don't work?
Yeah, they don't work.
So you have two vehicles that are your personal vehicles on this lot, and eight of them are disabled vehicles that you've parked on this lot?
Yes. Because I'm not using- Yes, because I'm not using the shop yet until you guys finish the rezoning. So, I can apply for the license and all that.
Disabled vehicles, interesting.
It's not disabled vehicles.
You said they don't work?
Yeah, mechanically wise, they are shut down.
Right, so they're disabled. In other words, they don't function.
So, can you take a key, put it in the ignition and turn it and they come on?
To lock the car, yes.
Can you start the car?
No.
Okay, it's okay, we're using different terminology here. The cars don't work.
So essentially, you have a junkyard?
No, I don't. No, those are nice car, I'm, I'm willing to fix them and so.
I move to disapprove this proposal. I don't have any confidence in the applicant with regard to this. He's already acting outside of our ordinances with essentially operating a used car dealership on this property.
I am not.
Without a license to do so.
I still have a license for mechanic shop and it's still on. So, that's not, I'm not buying a car to sell them until I apply for the license. I never sold any car in my car lot, never.
Okay.
Okay, let me kind of spell this out to you.
Yes, sir.
Okay? You've got, you're requesting a zoning change to operate a used car lot in our city, okay? You currently have 10 inoperable cars untagged on your lot.
Yeah, the new Oklahoma law when you buy a car, they took the tag.
So, in Oklahoma, that equates to a junkyard.
No, they took the tag, the new law, when you buy a car, they took their own tag.
I, I get that, but you have an obligation to buy dealer's tags and put them on it.
I don't have license yet, I never buy.
I rest my case. I do have a motion on the floor.
Respectfully, motion is pending. I want to pursue my motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny this request. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Your request has been denied and we're not trying to be difficult.
Yes, you are.
But you have to follow the law.
I, I just, I spent almost $50,000 to fix the building and those car I have, I never done anything to them.
When, when you make, when you, when you get all the requirements.
I did all the requirement.
I'm not going to argue with you.
No, I'm in the city, I already.
When you get all the requirements to sell cars.
Yes.
Then come back and see us and then we'll talk, okay?
They will not give me any license until rezoning will be approved.
Thank you for being here.
I, I just cannot get any.
Thank you, sir.
They will not give me any license.
It's been denied. You'll have another shot at it.
This is my second time.
Come in compliance with the law. Thank you.
I'm going to address one of the things you said if I can. It is your second time. Neither time have you, regardless of the first time, you were overseas, but you didn't have anything ready.
Such as what? The building isn't ready?
There was a whole litany of stuff that you didn't have cleaned up and that was the reason the thing was denied the first time. When you look at this lot right now, it looks like you're subverting the rules where we said no. You have what looks like, I'm, I'm an ex-car guy. I drove by the other day, I see a D-tag on a couple, a paper tag on a couple of vehicles and I see a whole bunch without any tags. I'm like, car lot. It's what it looks like and if it's a duck, quacks like a duck, walks like a duck, it probably is a duck.
No, no, it's a mechanic shop.
You didn't follow through on the first time and the second time, it looks like you're subverting the will of the council. And that's not a good way to encourage any of us to vote a certain way. You don't get to do things your way and then come up and say, I'm sorry, I'd rather have forgiveness than permission. And that's what it's looked like the last two times.
No.
When I came out and visited with you and I said, make sure that you call Kelly, make sure you follow all the rules, you don't do anything that's outside the rules. I can't say with, with any kind of faith or confidence that you didn't subvert the, the will of the council the last time and that you didn't think that you could just do what you wanted and come back and we were going to say yes. It's not how we work.
Is it because the car parking in the lot? Is that the issue?
Well, it's because I drove by the other day and so did staff and all of a sudden we have a car lot that's not licensed there.
I don't have a license, I don't have a car lot.
I understand that, but you can't, those cars are derelict cars according to our, our codes, aren't they, because they don't have a tag?
They will not give me any license until I rezoning.
Yes is the answer to that question.
So, you've got 10 derelict vehicles on your property?
Yes, is that the issue here?
Not follow, so, issue one, when this was not passed and now issue two for this one is your inability to follow the rules.
Yeah, issue one, because I just bought the property and I know it happens.
But it doesn't matter, the inability to follow the rules.
Yes.
Is why it's been said no twice.
Because the mechanic shop is still on. I mean, we never disconnect, that's why.
Your inability to follow the rules, the first time, was a misunderstanding maybe, we'll give you that.
Yes.
You had to go back to, to Egypt, your wife came up here, she didn't know what was going on.
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
Yes.
But this is the second time where you have not followed the rules. Two times makes a pattern.
You mean because the car parking in the backyard, that's it? Is that?
You had cars out that weren't in the back, you had cars out in the front when I drove by the other day and I could see no D-tags on them.
Yeah.
Or no tax period. So, they weren't in the back, you had them, I mean.
I am honest, I am telling you the truth.
I'm not saying that you're dishonest. What I'm saying is you haven't followed the rules. And that you want forgiveness, you don't want permission.
And once again, get everything lined up, get in compliance with state law and ordinance and come back and see us.
So, does that mean when I want to apply, the shop has to be empty? Is that what you?
You need to do your research and find out what you need to do.
That's what I check with the city.
Discussion's over, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, guys.
Get back with Kelly and, Kelly and Billy and they'll work with you.
Thank you.
Item number five, Mr. Lyon.
MP 14, discussion consideration approval of the estates of Midwest City, number one minor plant, plat located in the northwest quarter, section 36 township, 12 north range, 2 west of the Indian Meridian, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma, located at 500 North Douglas Boulevard. Mr. Harless.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. This minor plat is being requested to divide one 7.47 acre parcel into two individual parcels. In February of 1980, the majority of the frontage along North Douglas was rezoned to C1 restricted commercial. In October of 1980, the remainder of the lot was rezoned to R4 high-density residential. Although this parcel was then governed by two separate zoning districts, it has never been subdivided or until recently developed. In 2019, a building permit was issued for the estates of Midwest City, a senior housing development. Construction on that development is nearly complete. The application is being requested to allow the owners to subdivide and separate the two existing zoning districts. The boundaries of the lot one and lot two follow the existing zoning boundary. As required for minor plant, all required infrastructure is existing. No public improvements are required with this application. Action is at the discretion of the council and as always, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Mm-hmm, move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, sorry about that.
She was right and I was wondering if there was something I needed to know.
I've got a motion to approve and got a second and further discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all.
Discussion consideration approving amendment number seven to the construction management contract with CMS Willbrook Inc. for the Delta Midwest City Guest Rooms Tower and the amount not to exceed $4,486,253.60. This is the bid to renovate the five floors at the current Sheridan Hotel and convert it into a Delta.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. I just asked, when do we officially change flats?
When Marriott says we can. That, that will come after the construction and we get a inspection by someone from Maryland or New York.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
When the Coast Guard comes active, okay.
I have a motion and a second, I'm not going to lose.
All in favor?
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
There you go. Hey, we've got to keep moving.
I'm passing the gavel to Christine.
Keep moving.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. It's nice that we can finally have fun up here on this horseshoe. We now move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council? Hearing or saying no, we are.
Hang on, Jill, this addendum on the consent, do we have to do that one separate? Okay.
Come on forward, sir. Thanks for being here, could you state your name and address?
My name is Ed Daniel. I am, I live at 3208 North Forest Park.
Can you pull that microphone up just a little bit so we can all catch you?
I have that, I have that issue with being tall, sorry. I like that you guys are having fun now, so, that's a good introduction for me. My name is Ed Daniel, I'm a resident of Forest Park, 3208 North Forest Park Drive in Forest Park, Oklahoma. However, I'm a member of the Mid-Dell, you know, we're part of the Mid-Dell school system. So, I'm here to introduce myself as a candidate for the school board for Ward One of the Mid-Dell School Board.
That's the person.
Yes, I see your board. But I'm a parent, I have five children, they all attend Midwest City, Mid-Dell School District. My oldest daughter actually started in elementary school at Pleasant Hill and she's now a senior in college. And I have five kids. So, they've taken advantage of a great education here in Midwest City. My second daughter, she's a senior now and she's in class with Ms. Eads here. But I'm a concerned parent, you know, I'm invested in the district, I have kids in the elementary school right now. And I want to give back to the community that I live and serve. So, that's why I'm putting my name in the hat for school board. A little bit about myself, I'm not going to bore you with a lot, but I'm an OSU grad, 13 years of.
Oh, folks, hey!
My father-in-law's an OU grad, so, you know, I have to balance that out with my wife.
House divided.
But I obtained a PhD from Oklahoma State, bachelor's, master's and PhD in the engineering program there. I sit on the board for their industrial advisory board, I work for Boeing here just south of Midwest City here. So, I have about 25 years of engineering experience and it's just time for me to give back. So, I'm ready to get involved. I'm involved in student, I'm involved with the students' activities. The superintendent actually asked me to be a part of his equity board, to talk about equity in the schools. So, that was a good experience. But I'll tell you one story, I'm not going to bore you too much, but tell you one good story. So, I show up to the equity board meeting, you have current board members, you have staff, the superintendent, you have other parents. So, I walk in, they don't know who I am and they say, oh, you're Cheryl's dad, you're Kristen's dad, oh, I just love them so. So, anyway, that, that's just a testament of the type of kids that I have, the type of schools that Midwest City, Dell City produces. And I want to be a part of that. So, I want to bring my energy, I want to bring a fresh perspective. I'm not a educator, you know, I'm an engineer, but I want to bring that diverse or different mindset and to the, to the school board to help, you know, continue the excellence and propel us into the future. So, so I'm here to ask, you know, this is a community, I feel like education of students is part of a community. And if I was, if I'm elected, I want to partner with the community so that we can see our kids succeed. So, I'm here for your endorsement and I hope that I can obtain that from you and thank you very much for having me.
Well, first off, thanks for being here. Second, thanks for getting involved. We need more parents like you.
Absolutely.
We, we take great pride in our school system. Our city and our school system grew up together like this. And we've got a fantastic history in our, in our school system and our city too. So, thanks for being here, we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck, school board. Now, there is one caveat. Now, you live in Forest Park, correct?
Yes, sir.
We can find you a home in Midwest City.
Can it house five kids? Only criteria, right?
I fully get it, I fully get it.
I got to talk to the boss to see.
No, you leave the kids back in Forest Park and you move so your wife can, and you can have some peace and quiet.
But we are, but we are part of Mid-Dell School District, part of Ward.
You are.
Dell City, Forest Park, a little bit of Midwest City, so, we're all in the family, so.
Thanks for being here and good luck to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further business to bring before the board, the board, the council? The board, the council, the committee, I don't care, but it doesn't matter, does it? City attorney? There are further information packets attached to your packet for your enjoyment. Hearing, no more, no more business, we are hereby adjourned. But we ain't over yet. And now call the, to order, oh, I hate it when you do this. Call the order of the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have a consent agenda attached to this. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the trustees can by unanimous consent approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience which discuss an item can be removed and heard in regular order. Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
I'd like to move. Oh, sorry, and, and I just have one quick comment on this.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't remember this in years past and maybe it's just my memory's fading, but consent agenda, item number three, with the Y offering swim lessons at Rena Swimming Slide, I think that's fantastic. So, I just wanted to say thank you for that partnership. I think that's great. So, with that, I wanted to move to approve the whole thing.
It has been a great partnership.
Yeah. We've gotten to him quite a bit.
Well, thank you.
Again, I said my memory fades sometimes, help me out, Ms. Christ Ellen, help me out.
Can, can we get approved on that? Motion to approve.
I've got a motion.
The second.
And I've got a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Move into new business public discussion, anybody have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we hereby adjourned and I call the order of the Midwest City Hospital Authority. We do have a consent agenda, again, these items are placed on the consent agenda so trustees by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience which discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion and a second, further discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We do have a couple of addendums attached to this, or these discussion items?
No, these are all consent.
These are all consent, so that was all included in that?
Yes.
We do have one discussion item.
No actions needed.
No action needed. You're making this easy. We now move into new business public discussion, does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we hereby adjourned and I call the order of the Special Economic Development Authority. We have one discussion item.
Discussion consideration to approve the minutes of the February 23, 2021 special meeting as submitted.
Motion to accept.
Second.
And motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. We now move into public discussion, does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we do have an executive session attached to this agenda, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration of entering, one entering into executive session is allowed under 25 OS, subsection 307 C11 to confer on matters pertaining to economic development including the transfer of property, financing or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to remain or to locate within the city. And two, an open session authorizing the general manager administrator to take action as appropriate based on the discussion in executive session.[1791.87]
Chair, entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session, okay.